Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting to order. Could you do the roll call, please, Ms. Donna?
Ms. Miller. Ms. Williams. Ms. Chesney. Ms. Kearns. Ms. Lanning. Mr. Moore. Mr. Richmond.
I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. If I can get out. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, is there a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mike and Jennifer, was that? Okay, anytime you're ready.
Yes. Ms. Miller. Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Chesney. Ms. Kearns.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Okay, all approved. And now I will turn things over to Dr. McGinnis.
Can you hear me? Okay, this is great, this is a lot better. First of all, thank you all for being here tonight. We are very appreciative of our public and the opportunity to provide feedback will be taken into consideration. So, thank you very much for being here. We are going to start with giving some information and then we will move into public comment. So, I want to do a brief recap of what's led us up to this point. So, on September 22nd, at our Board of Education meeting, we reviewed multiple options for facilities and possible reconsolidation along with some building retirements. Administration recommended Option 2 for a Lafayette Central model and Option 7 for a Benton and Central model. At last Monday's public hearing, an impact analysis was presented per Board Policy FC. Boundaries were presented for Options 2 and 7. Twenty-seven individuals provided public comment. At the work session just after the public hearing, the Board of Education requested in Plan 2 that we move Edison to the north. So, if you look at those maps in the hallway, it says 2B and the only change from 2 to 2B is Edison moving to the north. In Plan 7, it was requested by the Board for us to move Stonecrest Neighborhood to the north. That plan is now labeled 7B and that's the only change in that plan. The Board also requested a list of construction projects that had been completed since 2019 in DLR study. That is listed on our Board docs under Capital Projects. The Board requested that we consider Plan E, which maintains all high schools. The Board also asked for us to consider boundary adjustments that allow students to attend the school located within one mile of their residence rather than being assigned to a school farther away. And Mr. Kelly will speak to that when he goes over our boundaries. I would like to draw your attention to the impact analysis. If you can open that up completely to where you can see the whole side of impact analysis and the part that says Board Policy and Possible Action. So, Policy FC requires that before any facility is permanently closed, the Board must hold a public hearing to elicit comment on the proposed action. Tonight is an opportunity to provide feedback, not only for facilities but also for any other school-related matter. As part of this process, our administrative team has prepared an impact analysis which includes all three of those numbers there, all items listed under Board Policy FC. If you can see on the far right there where it says Impact Analysis, our K-12 enrollment of 9,969 students, which is an 83.6% capacity, leaves 1,955 empty seats across our district. Maintaining our existing facilities with declining enrollment has created inefficiencies in space, staffing, and operating costs. The second column where it says Alternatives Considered, the combined optimum capacity for our high schools is 3,866 students. Our current total high school enrollment is 2,950, leaving 960 empty seats. These inefficiencies are intensified by the continued decline of our district's operating fund balance, making it essential that we evaluate the most sustainable structure for the future of our district. You can see under Alternatives Considered, this is in alignment with Policy FC. We took a look at a Benton and Lafayette model, just having those two high schools. And if you look at those numbers there, then we wouldn't have the capacity. So, challenges with that would be insufficient capacity, the need for major additions, and parking limitations. If you look at the one-school Central model, that's something we heard a lot about. Why can't we just have one high school at Central? Again, if you look at that, we do not have the capacity. That would also require major additions or possibly imminent domain to obtain the needed space. And I would also note that the largest high school in the state of Missouri is Blue Springs, which is currently just under 2,400 students. The far-left-hand column where it says Most Impacted Schools, where it says Current, that is the 25-26 enrollment from September 24th, just about a month ago. The three columns to the right of that are Projections. When we completed those projections, Preston Smith in 2019 included a High Range, a Mid Range, and a Low Range. And the numbers listed in the three columns are lower than the Low Range. So, currently where we are at, it's lower than what was predicted, lower than the Low. If you can turn that over to the backside, the two columns on the left compare Lafayette and Central. The two columns on the right compare Central with Benton. We would have to use Hyde in order to have that model. Benton and Central alone do not have the capacity. And if you were at last Monday's public hearing, this would be updated because when we did last Monday's hearing, that was for Options 2 and 7. And this, you will see the updates are highlighted. So, that is data for Options 2B and 7B with Edison moving to the north and the Stonecrest Neighborhood also moving to the north. We will look at the column where it has Lafayette and Central and the total number of students displaced. This is the same as last Monday if you were at the public hearing, 3,878. The Benton-Hide model would have 4,257 students displaced. We do have opportunities with these two high school models to consolidate some of our classes and provide more opportunities. I gave the example last Monday. Central has swimming, our other two high schools do not. If we had a two-high-school model, that is something that could be a real possibility. Same thing with tennis. Lafayette here last year had three tennis players. You have to have four tennis players to make a team. So, there are some opportunities for us to provide more extracurriculars for our students. And then I will turn it over to Mr. Carell to talk about staffing.
All right, thank you. Just a quick update on all three projected plans. So, Plan 2 and 7 has the potential to displace 400 to 500 staff members if we need to relocate them if the Board chooses one of these options. Plan E is estimated to relocate approximately 131 staff members. We've had multiple communications with buildings over the last three weeks, kind of informing them, at least on my side, on the possibilities on staffing. We have tried to be clear that our goal and intention is to reduce staffing through attrition, which is resignations and retirements. We are not having conversations right now in a reduction in force. Some of the staff members that we are looking at is District Administration, Building Administrators, Teachers, Support Staff, Secretaries, Nutrition, across the board, Maintenance, Coaches, and trying to gather feedback on what is the best approach because there are so many different variables when it comes to each one of these roles. Dr. Hitchgorth here in a minute will explain kind of the cost savings with each one of these plans. We know going into the potential of next year and these possible changes that we might be overstaffed next year because it's unrealistic that we are going to be right-sized through one year of attrition. It's probably going to be a two-to-three-year process. The example I used last week, since I teach Social Studies, or did. It's unrealistic to think if we need to reduce four middle-school Social Studies teachers that we are going to have four through attrition, retirement, or resignation. So, we are going to be overstaffed. I know in Plan 2 and 7, it calls for a larger middle-school. That would be ideal to place additional staff members in there just because there's some unknowns and we're probably going to make some mistakes along the way. When we created some of these models, I just wanted to be clear that we based these off of student populations, so class sizes, administrators, it was the number of students in the building, secretaries, and so on. I'll turn it over to Dr. Hitchgorth.
Thanks, Ms. Carell. A breakdown financially of each of the plans as well as the first plan on the large ledger sheets that you see in front of you. The first plan includes the October budget revision that we will ask for your approval at the October 27th Board Meeting. And what this first page does is it kind of just gives you that control group of if we just do that October budget revision and then continue status quo, you know, how we will continue to reduce our reserve ratio looking out to FY '30. One thing I did want to mention on these projections is they are just that, they are projections. For the revenue side, we currently use the current foundation formula that we get for state payment. And as many of you know, the Governor currently has some committees looking to rewrite that foundation formula. And so, when that changes, that will change some of these projections as well, especially on the revenue side. But what we're looking at tonight, a lot of is the expense side and how we can look to reduce expenses through some of these building consolidation plans. So, at least this first page kind of gives you that basis to go off of when you're looking at the other plans. One thing I will say is the savings that you see in these plans are only the savings themselves. We anticipate other opportunities for savings besides the building consolidation plans, but I did not want to put those in here because then you would not be comparing apples to apples. You would have other savings initiatives in there as well that might cloud some of the projections that we have going forward. So, you only see savings from the plans in here, but we anticipate to see more through other cost-saving initiatives as we plan our budgets each and every fiscal year. And so, on your second page starts with the plans, which is Plan 2, which is the Central Lafayette model. And this is the max savings that we can see from this plan all in the first year, meaning if we see the right amount of retirements and resignations from our staff members, then we will be able to realize all of those savings in year one and also realize the utility savings from the buildings. Now, I did not start the savings for the buildings until FY '28 because I feel like we would need one fiscal year to be able to successfully sell those buildings that are retired, to be able to see the results or the gains of not having to have the deferred maintenance, the electrical, water, and the different costs you have with maintaining those buildings. So, just wanted to note that. So, on that first plan, on Plan 2 for the max savings, you can see where we end up for FY '30 as that plan plays out throughout the five years. And then the next page shows Plan 2 estimated, meaning based on past history and how we've seen staff moving in our district, this is how we think the attrition piece will fall in place for next fiscal year and that we will continue to see savings the next year as well. So, we won't see all the savings upfront in the first year, but we'll see them over two to three years. And so, you can see I've spread those over two years with Plan 2 on the estimated piece of how that will play out on the projections all the way out to FY '30. On your next page, you have Plan 7, which is the Benton-Central model. Again, same type of scenario. If we had the perfect storm of retirements and resignations and we were to properly fill or consolidate our staffing in these certain areas, we would see all of our savings upfront in year one, which is FY '27. But, we believe the more likely scenario is that Plan 7 estimated, which has those savings over two years as we can see you to see the attrition in the different buildings and be able to right-size our staffing. And then the last two pages is Plan E for max savings. You can see over on the right side, up above, where it has the assumptions. So, in that plan, we see about $313,000 starting FY '28 from the closure of those buildings are in that plan. And then also all of the staffing savings realized in year one. And then Plan E estimated is the same type of thought process where we're going to see that over two years instead of one year of the more likelihood of how we will see that staff align as we go forward and what that looks like out to FY '30. So, hopefully that gives you a little bit of background about that projection tool and what that can give. Again, those are projections. You could see the attrition fall a little bit differently than we have it aligned here. But those are our best projection based on past history and how we've seen staff move it in the district as well as average utility and deferred maintenance costs over the last three to five years.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Stacia Steader and I'm here to present tonight an academic lens. And so, everything I'm going to speak to is through academics. And I'm grateful for the academic service team, our district leadership team, and thinking through what is going to transform teaching and learning in the St. Joe's School District. I want to share that above all, our team is totally committed that every classroom in the St. Joe's School District has a high-quality educator in front of our kids. That same commitment applies to strong, effective building leadership at every single site. As I reviewed the Vision Forward Plan and just our academic team department, we know that early childhood services are a top priority. Research consistently shows that high-quality learning boosts outcomes in reading, math, and overall school readiness. It is a priority for our team to ensure that we have early childhood services. The other piece at the elementary level, if I look at that, is equity is at the cornerstone to our work. Again, I can't tell you, the educator makes all the difference. So, we have set up consistent instructional frameworks that no matter what site you're in, you have the same number of literacy minutes and the same number of math minutes. Those are top priorities for our team. We consistently reexamine where do we need to provide supports for a building. And you'll find that through title dollars, whether that be instructional coaching, whether that be our district leadership team going into classrooms to provide support. We see this as an issue. Again, I can't stress enough that the educator makes all the difference. So much so is that we recognized about two years ago that it was essential that we created academic lab classrooms. And the academic lab classrooms, we have four teachers who serve as models in our most vulnerable sites. And so, where we see student outcomes that need to be supported, we have supported model classrooms in those sites. A consistent grade-level model is needed at the middle schools. If you look at two of our sites, we have sixth graders being serviced and the other two sites, we have seventh, eighth. That consistent model is needed. It's needed to support our educators in professional learning and it's needed to ensure that a group of students who is not part of a feeder system is left out. And so, for example, I'm going to share, there's a group of students over at Carden Park that at seventh grade enter into Spring Garden. We want those students to feel like they belong, just like our Hyde and Hosea students. They're entering in at seventh grade there. As I look at all the plans, I shared with you guys the other night that in the two-school model, we are confident that we could provide academic programs at each of those both sites. In Plan E, it's a status quo. It is a status quo. If we try to provide every program at every three of those sites, we risk extending, overextending, our most precious natural resource, which is our high-quality educator. And we may not be able to deliver all the courses out of each of those sites. If this is the direction of the Board, we will have to take the innovative approach by offering courses at Hilliard or other sites to allow us to maintain and maximize expertise and resources while remaining and providing that high-quality instruction. I also share that what our team has consistently heard, and we heard it again today at one of the schools that we were seeking feedback from, is the importance of alternative education. Our classroom teachers value alternative education and our Webster staff sees the importance of alternative education. That site provides resources for our students that we can't provide in the other buildings. That Tier 3 intervention is important and we would look at Webster as being a phased-out approach, especially with special programs there. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacia. Again, those enrollment projection numbers on here, the highlighted ones, so these would be if it was 2B and then 7B. Those numbers are updated and highlighted. The enrollment projections for Plan E are posted online. I do want to revisit our Vision Forward priorities, just a few of them. So, one was expanding the availability of quality early childhood programs. Another was providing a consistent middle-school model in configuration and curriculum to improve academic achievement. And another one was to consolidate and right-size, make more equitable and functional facilities at all levels so that curriculum and programs are equivalent and buildings at optimum efficiency. Vision Forward, that process took place in 2022. The Board approved that plan in December of 2022. And at this time, I will ask Jake Kelly to display the boundaries.
Okay, what I'll show you here first tonight, at the last meeting, we discussed Plan 2 and Plan 7. Plan 2 being the two-high-school Lafayette and Central model. So, these also, I know for some of you out here, the screen might wash some of the color or it might be hard to see. They are posted outside and they're posted on the agenda for the meeting on Assembly Online tonight. So, you can go get them and look at them later. They're there, available for you to look at. So, Plan 2, what we presented last time, the Board had asked for a plan to show Edison School District moving north. So, in this, you can see the orange line is the divider between the two high school, but it really just looks like the darker, thicker line on here. So, for the change, the only change merely between the two is moving Edison up to the north. So, that way, it would feed to Lafayette for high school instead of to Central. So, the challenge there is what your numbers look like for Lafayette. They would go from 1,100 to about 1,300 students at the high school level. So, that's the challenge that we see there is we feel like that might put Lafayette...
Plan Two being the two-high-school Lafayette and Central model. So these also, I know for some of you out here, the screen might wash some of the color, or it might be hard to see. They are posted outside, and they're posted on the agenda for the meeting on Assembly Online tonight. So you can go get them and look at them later. They're there, available for you to for you to look at. So Plan Two, what we presented last time, the board had asked for a plan to show Edison School District moving north. So in this, you can see the orange line is the divider between the two high school, but it really just looks like the darker, thicker line on here. So for the the change, the only change merely between the two is moving Edison up to the north. So that way, it would feed to Lafayette for high school instead of to Central. So the the challenge there is what your numbers look like for Lafayette. They would go from 1,100 to about 1,300 students at the high school level. So that's the the challenge that we see there, is we feel like that might put Lafayette at max or over max capacity. For the other plan, Plan Seven is the Benton, Hyde, and Central two-high-school model. So this is Plan Seven that we showed last time and what those boundaries would look like. And so at the board's request, last time, we, they wanted us to look at moving Stonecrest to the north feeder system. So really, what I'll show you here, the the main changes that take place is that you can see that chunk where Stonecrest is moves to the north. I did not make any changes as far as adding students to the south. We just shifted all the students in the north around, so that way they would maintain the same feeder system. So the the major change is Oak Grove taking on those students. We had to shift between the other three schools to get the same number of students divided up into into those schools. So there's no no change as far as any of the south schools, except because Truman lost those kids, we didn't add any from the north. We just shifted some between Truman, Scaith, and Parkway to kind of even out those numbers a little bit. Okay? So that's the the main changes between those two plans from Plan Two and Plan Seven. So if you look at them out in the hallway, those are the things that you'll notice and the things that you'll see. I do also want to point out, we don't have a good printable map of the entire county. So we do have some areas in our district that are outside of the city limits. So on both of these plans, the boundary between Oak Grove and Scaith is Frederick Boulevard, Sixth Highway, all the way out to the edge of the county. So that doesn't change on something that you can't see. The same thing with on Plan Seven here between Lake Contrary and Hosea is 59 Highway all the way out to the end. So if you're on the east or west side of 59 Highway would be the border there, whereas with Oak and Scaith, it's north or south of Sixth Highway.
Okay, Jake, if you'll pull up the map for E, and I just want to do a little bit more impact analysis on that. So originally, the board had asked us to consider Central and Lafayette, and then an option for Central and Benton. It was asked last week that we consider Plan E. So just a little bit more information. We do have an impact analysis that's on Board docs that you can look at. But some of the components of Plan E are similar to our options in 2, 2B, 7, and 7B, which are proposing a three-middle-school model. That eventually transitions to a two-middle-school model, which is responsive to our declining enrollment of students. It also has Webster being retired as a phased-out approach. It has a potential, a new high school in the future. Some of the challenges with Plan E that we identified, some of the school enrollment counts were over the optimal capacity at the buildings. It does not include a definite plan for expanding early learning. It did say possibly Oak Grove. We know now we wouldn't have the space to be able to accommodate an additional early learning center there. The movement of Carden Park from one feeder pattern to another, and if you look at that on the feeder system, Carden Park goes to Spring Garden, but then it's after Spring Garden, they would go to Central High School. So that goes against the board's desire to have a cohort staying with the other members of that of that class. It also goes against our Vision Forward priorities. It does not recognize that in order for Truman to remain a middle school, the Keatley Center must be retained for gym use. The plan mentioned large populations near Pershing and Pickett. And while there are populations of students in those areas, the high school, I'm sorry, the high student density areas of St. Joseph are Limburg, Edison, Parkway, Carden Park, and Hosea. It creates inefficiencies with capacities at the three high schools, and if enrollment continues to decline at the current rate, Benton will return to its current population in just two to three years. Projected cost savings are lower in Plan E than 2, 2B, 7, and 7B. Jake, I'll turn it over to you to talk about boundaries.
Yep. So if you want to look at the boundary system here, this map's a little bit different because we do have the change in feeder pattern for Carden Park. So the green line that is kind of hard to see here, which in the north end of town, the the green line covers both the middle and the high school boundary for those kids that would feed to Rubidu and then to Lafayette. And then where you have your change is there in the other part of town in the south and central, where Carden Park would feed down to Spring Garden and then back up to to Central for high school. So this is very similar to a plan that I had looked at and did a few years ago when we turned Mark Twain into an early learning center. At that time, we examined closing or repurposing two elementaries to add two early learning centers in that time. And we just found it very tough with the current elementary schools that we had to fit all of our kids in. So the challenge here for for me was, we have an abundance of elementary schools in the north. We don't really have an abundance of elementary schools in the south. So in this model, all of your boundaries are going to shift to the south in order to pick up those kids and fill up those population gaps. So here, Carden is around 630 kids. Scaith is around 500, where their optimum capacity is about 40 below that. But that's to try to keep as many of those kids in the same area as we as we can. And then Hosea is about 490. So this is similar to Plan Seven when we first started in regard to that, where we didn't have enough elementary space in the south end. So we had to repurpose Lake back to an elementary school in order to gain that space back. Because you'll notice here, Scaith is a big area that wraps around. And that's with Pickett at capacity there in the middle. And once again, the challenge with those two schools is their location because they're mere blocks apart. And I know we did have a request at the last board meeting, I forgot to speak to this during the first part, to try to see if we could get kids within walking distance in that one-mile radius to go to the school that they're at. And while it would be wonderful, it's not always feasible because like even in this plan, along with the other ones, you look at Edison, you look at Parkway, just here in the middle, there are more kids in a mile radius than we could fit in those schools because they're so densely populated with students. And then because of like where schools lie, like Pickett and Scaith, it's impossible because they're not a mile apart to try to get those kids within walking distance to the school that they are. But but any of the borders that are within, we've tried to be on major roads because we really don't want kids crossing major roads anyway unless there's patrol there. So. So this is Plan E. All of the students fit, but your large capacity because of your lack of elementary school space in the south side would be Carden Park and Scaith would be where your overages can occur.
Mr. Correll, Mrs. Studer, do you have anything else to add as far as Plan E?
No.
Okay. Dr. Hedgecorth?
I was just going to say, you have a project list?
And maybe transportation.
Yeah, so at the last meeting, some board members asked about a project list that we have from 2018-19 school year, when DLR made all the grades on all the buildings. And you will notice that in your packet tonight, you will see the building, you'll see the capital improvement description and the cost. So that will give you a history of all the improvements that we've had that's above the $50,000 threshold at all those different schools. So that might give you just kind of a quick rundown of what those have been. So when you look at DLR's model for what they've given that score on that building, you can then take into effect the improvements that we've had in those different areas. So I just wanted to point that out. We're also working with First Student to look at these three different models, Plan Two, Plan Seven, and Plan E, to look at transportation costs. And we anticipate we will have that by the October 27th board meeting. There's a lot of work that goes into that that routing piece to see how many, you know, bus drivers that we might need for different routes, additional buses, all those different factors. And especially as, you know, we add on different plans, and then to give those to them as well to consider that for analysis. So I don't have that for you tonight, but I should have that for you by the 27th. It gives an impact of what transportation might be for each of those plans. Thank you.
Okay, tonight, community members will have an opportunity to provide feedback. I will say I know our board is listening, and we'll take all of that feedback into consideration before a final decision is made. And I will turn it over to Ms. Williams.
Everyone will have up to three minutes, just like our last meeting. Each individual will only be allowed to speak one time. In your in your information, it can be related to the reorganization, or in all honesty, anything about the district. And then once you come to speak, if you could give your name and your address. Odd numbers over here, even numbers over there. All right, if you can begin to line up, and we can start. If you need your number, we'll be calling those out too as well.
from an emotional standpoint on like extracurriculars and all that. Because if we like changed the school plan, we would be losing some of our bonds that we've built over time. And it would take more time to build those back up. It would cause more stress, anxiety, and pain to meet new people and deal with like having to like separate from all these different things, like sports. You'd be disbanding like several bonds from like brothers, sisters, all of that, because that's how people see it. And that's all I'd like to say.
My name is Robin Pettigrew, and I serve as a special education process consultant for our district. This is my 14th year in this community. And in that time, I've had the privilege of working alongside incredible staff across nearly every building, Hyde, Pickett, Edison, Oak Grove, Benton, and many more. But tonight, it's not about buildings. It's about the people who make those buildings great. Our staff is what gives this district its heart. The teachers, paras, custodians, secretaries, counselors, bus drivers, administrators, all of us together make this district what it is. We are the reason classrooms feel welcoming. We are the reason students grow and succeed. And right now, our staff is tired. Not from the work. We love the work. We're tired from the uncertainty, from taking two steps forward and three steps back, from standing still while waiting for direction. The inaction and indecision are wearing us down, not because we're unwilling, but because we care deeply and want to move forward. We're asking, no, we're begging, please, pick a plan. Let us do what we do best, teach, support, and serve our students. We can't keep doing that effectively under this cloud of uncertainty. We're caught between what is, what needs to happen, and what might happen. You have the information. You've seen the data. You know the needs. Going back to the drawing board again and again isn't helping. It's hurting. It's creating fear and fatigue when what we need is focus and direction. Our staff have proven time and again that we can rise to any challenge. We've taught through transitions, closures, and change. We've rebuilt communities after hard decisions. And every single time, it wasn't the buildings that made the difference. It was the people inside them. That will be true this time, too. There is still time. If a decision is made now, we can come together and make the plan work for students, for families, and for our community. But we can't begin that process until a plan is chosen, just as was promised by the end of this month. Please, hold up your end of the bargain. Make the decision. Give your staff the opportunity to move forward with clarity and purpose. We're not asking for perfection. We're asking for movement. Because we know that whatever happens, our staff will make it work. We are the ones who turn plans into action. We are the ones who turn buildings into schools. And we are ready to do it again together. What you decide on October 27th matters. Please, decide. We're ready to move forward together.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Kelsner. I live at 4603 Kensington Drive, and I'm a proud parent of two Lafayette High School graduates, and I currently have a sophomore attending. Lafayette has been a place where my children have felt supported and connected and involved. I've listened to other parents speak passionately about their schools, and I understand that sentiment. But we must remember, every student matters, no matter the neighborhood, no matter the school. No zip code is more important than another. We are all part of this community, and we all share the responsibility of a strong, equitable school district. The board faces a difficult task, providing the best education for every student while keeping the district financially stable. Right now, that stability is at risk. Reserves are projected to drop to 10.02% by year-end, leaving little room for error. Enrollment has declined. The district must act, and the most responsible choice is Option Two, Lafayette Central. It's the most cost-effective solution, the clearest path to restoring financial health, and the least disruptive to students and staff. Option Two impacts 427 staff and 3,878 students. The alternative impacts 535 staff and 4,257 students. Option Two saves 3.16 million in staffing versus 2.3 with the alternative. The financial benefits of Option Two are a higher reserve recovery, 19.89% by 2030 versus 16%. Lower disruption, 118 fewer staff and 379 fewer students impacted. Greater cost savings, 859,000 more in staff-related savings. It's a more equitable structure, no separate freshman center, so there's equal access for all students. But financial recovery alone isn't enough. The district must have a clear, actionable transition plan. Across the country, school consolidations show that closures can be risky, especially for the vulnerable students. Without strong Without strong support systems in place, we must ask, is there enough time to have a clear, actionable plan for success by fall of 2026? Plan E has also emerged, but it comes without the same level of analysis, although there is some tonight I've seen. Is it viable? Will there be enough time to see if that is a decision that can be made within one week? From the district's own website, under Prop Two, the FAQs, this question was asked. What happens if Prop Two does not pass? And I quote, "According to the district's long-range plan, the district will transition to a two-high-school model. Due to capacity limitations, the only viable option for two high schools at that time would be Lafayette and Central, in which case reconfiguration would occur fall 2026," end quote. That's the time. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name's Hannah Roberts, and I've worked at a local nonprofit for the last eight years, and I'm currently pursuing my master's degree in social work. I'm also a parent of a little girl in the South End at Hyde. I also grew up in the community where our schools aren't just buildings, they're the heart of our neighborhoods, and they represent our history, our pride, and our shared investment in every child's future. I want to start by acknowledging the district's stated goal is stated on your website for your proposed plans of change, preparing students for success in a complex and changing world, and the vision creating a climate of achievement and partnership with an engaged community. Tonight, I'm here as a part of that engaged community, asking that we live out those words on action, not just on paper. Closing so many schools will have a devastating impact on our communities. Our schools bring stability, mentorship, and pride to families who might otherwise feel forgotten. Moving children across town might seem efficient on paper and in theory, but it strips them of belonging, the very sense of community that helps them learn and thrive. Many of our families walk to school. They rely on neighborhood teachers who know their kids by name, who understand their families and their stories. Neighbors help walk children to school and have a sense of belonging. Bussing students across town not only adds to logistical stress, but it also sends a painful message that their part of town isn't worth investing in, and I might mention the South End specifically. Children shouldn't feel like their school was shut down because of where they live or what their zip code is. Closing all these schools and sending a multitude of students to a few extremely large schools will not improve attendance. It'll strip teachers of jobs, reduce safety, lower academic achievement, less individualized attention, disrupt relationships, and lastly, decrease the population of St. Joe, because I know many families planning to leave if this happens. I want to ask, what happened to meeting families' needs and keeping schools rooted in the communities they serve? I'm asking the board to consider alternatives, to explore creative ways to revitalize, not eliminate, our community schools. Let's live up to the promise in your own mission with partnership when engaging in a community. We're here tonight, engaged, ready to collaborate, asking you to not take away staples in our community. So please don't measure progress by how many schools we can close and how that can up your numbers, but by how many communities we can keep whole. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lillian Williams from one of the freshmen here at Lafayette. Something that I've realized and have seen over the years in schooling at all is the mental health that can be impacted by having people change their schools or also doing the busing. The distance I know now for some of the people going to Limburg, not Limburg, Lafayette right now, can be close to 25 minutes drive or an hour bus ride. Closing down some of the schools, it can cause, it'll have us, one, get up earlier, two, really packed buses. For teens, studies have proven getting up really early affects their mental health and emotional health too. Sorry. This can leave them very drained for schooling and also more activities and not wanting to participate in them. So, so there's the district, not the district, sorry. The distance, that, and then the mental health will be, and, no, the, mental health will get affected by teens. Teens' mental health will be affected due to them getting up earlier. Again, studies have proven that getting up earlier for a teenager, it impacts them mentally, emotionally, and physically. It leaves them very drained throughout the day and earlier in the day. That's all I'm going to say today.
Good evening. My name is Matt Cave, and I live at 328 Mayfair Drive. First, I would like to thank the board for the opportunity to share my thoughts on the challenging decisions that lie ahead for our district. I've been blessed with an amazing wife and three children, and I am speaking this evening to support them. My family and I moved to St. Joseph the summer of 2012. Our three children have grown up and excelled in the Northside school system. Our oldest daughter Riley graduated from Lafayette and was one of the first Grow Your Own Scholarship recipients. Riley is now in her first year teaching at Pershing Elementary. Our son Walker graduated from Lafayette in 2024. Walker had the opportunity to be an intern for two years with the technical department, which led him to a full-time career in the tech department in our district starting the week after he graduated. Our youngest daughter Brooklyn is a freshman at Lafayette High School this year, and so far has participated in tennis and color guard. I hope I haven't seen the last of her tennis performances wearing green. My wife is an elementary educator, and the first year that we lived in town, Caitlin took the opportunity to substitute teach at many of the elementary schools in our area. She was quickly drawn to Pershing Elementary. The following year, she accepted a full-time position at the school and has loved her job ever since. For those that haven't had the opportunity to experience the Pershing Elementary culture, I would like to share my observations. The core of Pershing Elementary is based on high expectations focusing on education, respect, and love. Over the past 13 years, there have been changes in the faculty, but those core values have never wavered. Faculty, office staff, paraprofessionals, engineers, custodians, and volunteers are all actively involved in making Pershing Elementary so very special. This culture results in outstanding student attendance as well as test scores every year. The Pershing Elementary is truly a family, and that is the family that so many of our students desperately need right now. Closing Pershing Elementary would be an absolute travesty for the Northside community and should not be an option considered by our school board. I strongly believe that the majority of the community want the three-high-school model to stay in place. All three public high schools have strong traditions passed through generations of students. The three-high-school model still provides the best educational and extracurricular opportunities for our children. For years, it has been disappointing to watch a school board choose not to always support the students and the educators first. The community has been forced to witness multiple dysfunctional board meetings full of blatant disrespect between the board members. Soon, the board has the opportunity to regain the respect and trust of the community. Options Two and Seven are not supported by the families that I have spoken with. I strongly urge the board to instead consider to vote for Plan E. Plan E provides the best path forward for our school district and our community. Thank you to all in the community that were involved in developing this third option. The community has shown what can be accomplished when people choose to work together, creating a budget-friendly plan that puts students and teachers first. Thank you.
Warren Ingram, 201 Oberlin Street, which is the original Benton High School football field. Thank you very much. For too many years now, the city has been living under a cloud of what high school is going to be closed or repurposed. Many people have stood before you over the years, passionately asking you to leave our high schools alone. Many people have told you that if a high school is closed or repurposed, you'll never get another bond issue passed again. Last week, I spoke to you as a proud Benton graduate and a proud South Ender. Tonight, I speak as akin to my North End friends. We are both blue collar, hardworking, members of our community, and very proud of our high schools. Lafayette alumni has been a valuable asset to their school, and it shows. People have lined up in the past to better Benton and Lafayette with their own time, skills, sweat, and money. The one thing I've noticed in these past years is that no one has ever mentioned closing Central or making it a middle school for the city, which is also a bad idea. I'm not going to stand here and talk smack about Central because I know there are just as many proud Central graduates and alumni boosters. Right now, there are people that are not very happy with me mentioning closing or repurposing Central, but hey, it's just the building, which is the same thing we've heard about Benton and Lafayette. If you want a lesson in gerrymandering, go look at the St. Joe School District High School Boundaries Map, which you just showed a little while ago. Lafayette lost a really good band teacher. This is a few years ago. I know this because he's a friend of mine. He had had high hopes and big dreams, but in my career, I've been laid off three times. Each time was a kick in the gut, not knowing how I was going to meet my financial obligations. There was just as twice as many times I was looking at having to hit the streets due to a looming reduction. Every time, there was always a depression of what am I going to do? How do I explain this to my kids that the job I love is going away? I say this to support all the teachers and staff who just want to be left alone and do the job they love. At the school they love, be with the students they love. It's hard to be dedicated to a district when you have this cloud hanging over your head. Finally, I have looked at the situation of our schools and its enrollment, and personally, this is how it appears to me. The St. Joe School District is in the service business. To educate the youth of our city, in order to provide this service, we need to provide safe, welcoming environments so our students can receive the best in what we can offer. We need to provide a secure and promising future for our teachers and staff. If we do not offer these things, people have and will look elsewhere, just like everybody else in this room would do. Nobody wants to work somewhere when the future is uncertain. When my boys were in school, I told them that this was the most important job they will ever have, the job of learning. Of course, he would answer back, say, "But I'm not getting paid." I told him that the payoff was coming as they got older. Nobody wants to work in an environment of uncertainty, and parents do not want to do the same. Keep all three high schools, and let's get back to the business of educating.
Hello. For those who don't know me, my name is Erica Spiker. I'm a senior at Lafayette High School as well as student body vice president. Real quick, just imagine waking up one morning and finding out a place you spent half of your life was going to be taken away from you. Classrooms are different, teachers are different, your friends laughing in the hallway are gone, just silence, the whole world is different. How would you feel? Today, I'm speaking on the behalf of all Lafayette students, but especially juniors who spent their whole high school years imagining what their senior year was going to look like. What you may not realize is Lafayette getting shut down, the amount of opportunities you are ripping away from your juniors. For example, Lampian Assembly becoming student body officers, DECA, FPLA, sports, cup awards, scholarships, in addition, how do you think this might affect students' class rankings? However, emotions are only one side of the story. Let's take a look at what research shows. Let's start by taking a look at money. Say that Benton and Hyde and Central plans are, our reserves are projected to reach around 16% by 2030. However, let's go to Lafayette and Central. Our reserves could grow to 20% by 2030. So far, looking at money slash reserves, Lafayette and Central plan is the best option. Now, let's take a look at capacity. At Benton High School, the maximum amount of people it can hold is 184 people. At Hyde Elementary School, the maximum amount is 377 people. So altogether, that makes 1,261 people. Versus at Lafayette High School, the maximum number of people is 1,300. That is more than both Benton and Hyde combined together before renovations. That is before both Benton and, Benton High School and Hyde Elementary School combined. Oh, revending Hyde Elementary School would be very expensive since it requires completely rebuilding it to function as a high school. While there are also rebuild, re, um, re, they, revending Benton High School and Central High School too. Although, revending Lafayette High School and Central High School could cost less money because Lafayette High School is already larger than both Benton High School and Hyde Elementary School. While there are still many unanswered questions like bus situations, how everybody, how everything is going to work, how students would be affected, and more, we need to take our time and make sure we have all the educational facts to make the best decision. But so far, based on this evidence, Plan Two appears to be the better choice. Thank you for your time.
Hello. My name is Gage Claude Gibson. I'm a second-year social studies teacher here at Lafayette. I'm not going to give my out, not going to give out my address because I got kids in here. So, from where I'm at, with so much left to consider, I feel like the only option that we have is to try to give another year on this thing. See if we can't take some more actions to keep us financially afloat while we're making more informed, you know, better decision. First and foremost, I think seeing which elementaries would be a good idea to close would be a good step forward, would be a good amount of money that we already have, that we've already been talking about, that we can kind of get concreted. So we're like, all right, we got this good floor. How can we build on that for additional savings? Right? It's also going to allow us to better right-size the high schools. And secondly, speaking of the right sizing, it's been a real, you know, hot butt, you know, hot buzzing, sorry, hot button word. It's been used a whole lot. I feel like this should be from the bottom up. We're worried about right sizing the high schools a lot. However, with both plans, one of the high schools that would become a middle school would have a higher population than what it currently has as a, as a high school. I just don't feel like that's a very good decision, especially since it would just be seven through eight. So just grade seven and eight in there, being more than four total grades, I'm just not seeing the math on that. You know, especially when the other two middle schools and those options would have around 400 at max, 200 and like 60 or so at the lowest. That doesn't really feel like right sizing to me. And I know it's probably hard to do it, but that just doesn't really make a lot of sense. It would also help, because if we right-size from the bottom and we go up, it's going to stop these high school classes from having 30-plus kids. I know that, I'm sure on the financial end, having as many kids in the class would make a lot of sense, and I don't doubt you, you know, I believe you. But if you ask a kid, lower, you know, the lower class size is the better because they get a better one-on-one experience with that teacher, and they can teach more efficiently. So even though more spaces may not be as efficient monetarily, it's going to help out a whole lot with the education section. Right? Thirdly, if we're going to take a year, let's see if we can't try to get like a levy or a new tax on there. You can call it the three schools tax, whatever you want to call it. But give the people a chance to try to say, hey, we want to pay for this. Because let's say you put it on there and it does fail. Then the board can be like, hey, we put something on the ballot, you guys didn't vote for it. Two schools it is. Because if the people don't vote on it, then that's just what it is. But if you put it on there, I don't know how much the percentages would be. You guys know more than I would. But as long as you try to put it on there, then you can at least say, we tried three schools. People didn't vote for it, or the people vote for it, three schools. Everyone's happy, and we got our monetary funding. You know what I mean? So, just to conclude, I really do think you guys are trying your best. I believe it. I have a former principal up here. I didn't have Mr. Corello as a student, but I've heard so many great things. I do think you guys are trying your best. All right? But there's just so many uncertainties, too many we're hoping, too many we're banking on. For me, not only just as a citizen, but also as a staff member to feel super secure in Plans Two or Seven, doubly so with Plans Two-B. 1,300 kids in Lafayette doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So, thank you.
Good evening, board members, administration, and the community members of St. Joseph. My name is Aaron Westlake. I live at 4305 Stonecrest Drive, and I am the father of a second grader in Mrs. Salisbury's class at Bessie Ellison Elementary. Over the past few months, it has become clear that our district faces serious financial challenges. Declining enrollment and attendance numbers have forced us to confront difficult realities. I want to thank the administration and the board for your efforts to guide us through these constraints and to work towards solutions. But there is something that numbers alone can't measure, and that's the value of community. When my wife and I moved back to Northwest Missouri five years ago, we wanted not only to be close to our family, but also to find a school where our children could thrive, both academically and emotionally. We looked at neighboring districts with higher test scores, but ultimately chose St. Joseph because of the strong, stable community we found at Bessie Ellison, a school with a long tradition of supporting families like ours. That sense of belonging isn't always quantifiable, but the effects certainly are. Bessie Ellison is ranked 85th out of more than 500 schools in the state of Missouri, and it is the only school in our district that is in the top 100 according to U.S. News &amp; World Report. Attendance is consistently above the district's 90% target. Even the value of Bessie to the community can be measured as nearly 600 residents of St. Joseph and East of had signed a petition to keep Bessie Ellison open. The current proposals to close Bessie Ellison may address immediately, immediate financial pressures, but they don't account for the additional disruption and instability these changes could bring. What happens if more families choose to leave the district or seek other educational options because their sense of stability and community have been lost? What happens when students with good attendance are motivated to stay home because they feel uncertainty in their new surroundings? The threat of even more revenue lost than projected? The threat of even more revenue lost than projected is very real with every student, family, teacher, and staff member that gets moved around. We all understand that change is necessary, but our obligation is to minimize disruption while meeting financial goals. Every major change risks greater attrition and lower performance. Our aim should not only be to reduce costs, but to also preserve the strengths that make our schools and our communities successful. I encourage the board to consider the alternative proposal to maintain our financial health without sacrificing the community bonds that defined our district. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. My name is Maya Gimel, and I'm a sophomore at Benton High School. Tonight, I'm speaking in support of Option E, keeping all three high schools open. I went to Northside Schools up to, up until high school, and my sister graduated from Lafayette. Even now at Benton, I've experienced the pride each school has. How is it fair to keep putting one on the line when both are vital to our community? You can balance a budget, but if students lose their motivation, opportunities, and connections, what are we really saving? When students struggle with their mental health, academics will suffer. When involvement drops, attendance will fall, and when families lose trust, enrollment declines, which eventually hurts funding, the very thing we're trying to improve. Closing a school that holds a community together isn't progress, it's regressive. Right now, our district already scores twelve percent below the state average in math and five percent below in reading. Studies that, studies show that consolidation actually lowers test scores. Shouldn't that be our main concern? It's not just academics that will be affected negatively. Sports, clubs, and fine arts might still exist, but not in the same way. Not with the same teammates, coaches, or opportunities to be involved. Fewer spots mean fewer chances for students to find their place, and that's what keeps so many of us motivated to show up every day. These plans reach beyond high schools as well. I went to Pershing Elementary, one of the top performing schools in the district. Schools like Pershing show what a great education looks like, and they should be examples we build on, not risk losing. Why is the school district proposing to close the top performing elementary schools? Families have lost faith in our district and are already looking somewhere else. Private schools and other surrounding districts will benefit from that. It's one more reason why we need to protect what we still have and focus on rebuilding trust within our own district. For students attending a high school through open enrollment, I ask that if schools remain open, we're allowed to graduate where we started. We followed district policy, made our choices based on those rules, and no one could have known that they might change halfway through high school. We built our lives around that trust, and it deserves to be honored. Please support Option E, keep Benton, Lafayette, and Central open. Thank you.
My name's Erin McGinley, and I'm a staff member, um, with the Special Programs Department. I'm addressing the board today to convey the urgency of the situation, emphasize the pressing need for a prompt and thoughtful decision. I've worked in this district for nine years, um, and in education for nineteen, and consolidation of buildings is not a new topic. The declining enrollment of the school district is a fact, and like it or not, it's our current reality. The time for action is now. The district has worked on these plans over extended periods of time with careful consideration into many factors. The recommendations provided by the current administration are not rushed. No matter the amount of research and planning that goes into this, there are always going to be some unknowns, some things that don't go according to plan, things that are just out of our control. Every decision brings with it good, bad, and some lessons along the way. The only thing that is certain is that indecision will steal years from many who will wind up wishing that those in the position to do so had the courage to take the leap and make a decision. I understand that closing a building is never an easy decision, but it is one of necessity. The consolidations of buildings was discussed and recommended before the current financial situation was a factor. It's been an ongoing discussion for years. Decisions and actions have continued to be put off, delayed, pushed on to the next board and/or administration. Some of the most important decisions do have a timeline. Continuing to delay, that opportunity may be gone. Do not let misinformation and fear tactics keep you from making a choice that involves the necessary changes. Do not miss the opportunity to do what's right for the students in the St. Joseph School District. The right sizing of this district is necessary to address declining enrollment and to be financially and fiscally responsible. Keeping a three-high-school model and/or not closing any buildings is not sustainable. We need to make progress, which cannot happen without making decisions. Change is hard and sometimes scary. Both can be true. You can be scared to take the next step and still know it's the right thing to do. The administration has continued to provide you with information, numbers, facts, proposals, yet some needn't determine, some seem determined to focus on other agendas or misdoings of the past. Our administration has great leaders sitting in front of you and in the audience today. They are not leading with bitterness or resentfulness of past mistakes, but with hope and the knowledge of the past to inform greater decision-making for the future. We cannot continue to cling to the past and the way things have always been. Things have changed. The community has changed. The district needs to change. At the end of the day, it's not about which option I personally like best, what a certain community group thinks is best, or what you individually like best. Look at the facts and make the decision that is best for the students and the future of the district. I do this job and continue to stay in this district because I want what is best for the students and families, helping them create a better future. I ask you to remember why you are sitting up there. Although many of you have differing, differing views and opinions, please remember that those differences do not have to equate to division. Engage in respectful dialogue, keep the focus on the decision at hand, and unite in your desire to make this district a better place. A decision needs to be made Monday, the twenty-seventh. Students, families, and staff deserve it.
Hello. My name is Danica Van Belkum, and I'm a junior at Central High School. I'm gonna switch it up for just a second and talk about the attendance policy that has been enforced throughout the St. Joseph School District and many other schools around the state. I agree, kids need to go to school to get a full education, but in some cases, this new attendance policy is completely impractical. In past years, the main reason a student has missed school has been due to doctor's visits or illnesses. This new policy has made it to where even if a child has a viable doctor's note, their attendance is still affected. It's gotten to the point where if a child misses a couple days of school because they physically can't get out of bed due to a sickness, this child's school will call the parents or family members and threaten action for truancy. I understand and agree with said actions being taken towards cases where there is deemed ongoing issues with attendance, but that shouldn't impact the students who have actual reasons as to why they can't show up to school. My little sister is getting her tonsils taken out. You wanna know what the first thing her school said when my parents called and told them she wasn't going to be at school for a week or two to recover was? They said, "Oh, she's gonna be gone that long?" You just heard that a ten-year-old little girl is going to get surgery, and the first and only thing you're concerned about is whether or not she's showing up to school? I'm tired of sitting here and letting the school district undermine a child's physical and mental health just so they can meet state requirements and gain state government funding, which, by the way, we never see. You say to not send your kid to school when they're sick, but the second we don't show up, it's a huge problem. According to the CDC, four in ten, which is forty percent of students, have persistent feelings of sadness and hopelessness due to school. Two in ten consider suicide. One in ten actually attempt it. It is wrong to sit here and force us kids to go to school every single day when our mental health and actual lives are at risk. You shouldn't force a student to come to school when they're sick, and you shouldn't punish a student for being sick and staying home and taking care of themselves. It is completely disheartening that you guys can see and hear what is happening to us and just sweep it under the rug so the attendance stays up. This generation of students' mental health shouldn't be overlooked because of matters that are only important to the state government and whether or not they can gain money from us coming to school. This, it seems like the school district cares more about the attendance than the actual children, and that is not how it should be. The school board and school district like to say what they do and accomplish is put in place to help us students and our families when in reality, it goes against us and negatively impacts us in so many ways. That is why I'm standing here today and speaking out. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to express our opinions regarding the current situation our district is faced with. My name is Tiffany Reno Walters. I'm currently a special education process consultant, and before that, I taught special education at Spring Garden for eleven years. This is my nineteenth year in the St. Joseph School District. I stand before you today with a single request. My request is that I'm asking you to just make a decision. Our district will never begin the healing process if we continue putting off the inevitable. It feels like we've been in limbo the last seven or eight years, or more even, just waiting to know what the next steps are going to be. We cannot continue like we are, and we need your leadership now more than ever. While I appreciate that the board is empathetic towards those in the community that are wanting to keep three high schools, it is time to make the decision. The decision between Options Two and Seven, not Plan E, F, or G. No more stalling. The time is now. It is time for change, and that change will never happen if the board doesn't step up and decide on Monday. For the sake of everyone in this community, it is time to move forward. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and community. My name is Cassandra Veal. I'm a psychiatric nurse practitioner, a mother of four children in this district, and a deeply concerned taxpayer. I'm here tonight because the decision to consolidate schools is one of the most consequential actions this board will take, and it deserves the gravity and transparency such a decision demands. As someone who works in mental health, I cannot overstate the impact this will have on the social and emotional well-being of our children and staff. Change of this magnitude, especially when it feels rushed or unclear, creates anxiety, instability, and fear. Our educators are already stretched thin, and morale across the district is at an all-time low. The trust between the community and this board is fractured, and unfortunately, recent events have only deepened that divide. Beyond the emotional toll, we must also consider the academic consequences consolidation often leads to larger, larger class sizes, disrupted learning environments, and strained resources. Students, especially those with special needs or those already struggling, are at risk of falling further behind. Teachers will be forced to adapt to new buildings, new teams, and new student populations, all by trying to maintain academic standards. This is not a recipe for academic success. It's a setup for burnout and decline. I ran for a seat on this board alongside some of you, and I remember the promises that were made, to make data-driven decisions and to prioritize academics, but right now, there's insufficient data to support a well-rounded, informed decision. Basic questions from the community remain unanswered. We're not even being given accurate information, like at the last meeting when the wrong boundary maps were presented for review. This isn't just about buildings. It's about people. It's about children who will be uprooted, teachers who will be displaced, and families who feel unheard. If we truly value transparency, integrity, and academic excellence, then we must pause. We must gather the right data, answer the community's questions, and rebuild trust before moving forward. Thank you.
My name is J.C. Jackson. I'm a junior at Lafayette High School. Over the past three years at Lafayette, I've been involved in many activities from student government to athletics. Graduating from Lafayette has always been a dream of mine, and I would love to have the chance to attend and graduate from the same school as my parents, grandparents, and other family members. However, I understand that this may not be a guarantee for me. Although the current situation of the board isn't ideal and may not turn out as I hope, I want to share why I believe Lafayette should remain open. According to the most recently published copy of the SJSD facilities plan, the district is proposing a two-high-school model to hold around one thousand five hundred students per building. Lafayette's capacity is one thousand six hundred and fifty students, while the proposed Benton-Hide model would only be able to hold one thousand four hundred and seventy-six students. This plan also says that the current reserve balance is ten point three percent, which is barely half of what it should be. Under Plan Seven, the predicted reserve is sixteen percent with a max of sixteen point eight-five percent, which is still below the twenty percent target mark. Plan Two, on the other hand, estimates reserves at nineteen point eight-nine percent with a max of twenty-one point twenty-two percent. I'm not only a student at Lafayette, I also attend Hilliard Technical Center where I'm enrolled in the Career Pathways to the Teaching Profession course. My dream is to become a teacher, and I have a deep passion for public education. I worry for not only my future in public education, but also the future of those who are working within our district. Throughout my education, I've had the opportunity to work with students and teachers from many schools within the Joseph School District. I want to see positive change and growth, not only for myself and my future, but for the educators and nearly ten thousand students who call this district home, both now and in the future. Thank you.
My name is Tawny Hamm. I am a Lafayette senior, and I'm in favor of the Lafayette Central Plan. Addressing the most obvious issues at hand, the Lafayette community has grown increasingly concerned with the whereabouts of our staff after the closing of Lafayette. While discussing and going through the decisions of the council, I became aware of the fact that the final location of our staff is unknown. It seems to me, and a lot of our community, that the council might be hoping that enough of our Lafayette staff quits before they can actually move to Benton. Secondly, I'm sure a majority of you are familiar with the concept that Lafayette serves its breakfasts and lunches under the National School Lunch Program, I'm sure it's called. Benton, however, requires their students to pay for their lunches. To this, I ask, how will the council find a solution to the contrasting lunch circumstances? Lastly, as a student ranked number seven in my class and elected into very prestigious positions at my school, what will happen to the students that hold themselves to high regards and have the work ethic to rise above the top twenty percent and/or put in the work daily to hold their positions? The Lafayette community is concerned that that progress within these groups, we lost the sheer number of students being mixed. Are there any plans to avoid this? Thank you.
Hello and good evening. My name is Grace Lee Navarro, and I'm a sophomore at Lafayette High School. I did not make a script for this because I wanted to talk to you as a person. My overall opinion is, it would be great if we could keep it all just as it is now. People have communities, right? You all have your communities. Wouldn't you be so scared if it just suddenly changed? A complete, like, one-eighty from what you're used to? That would be shocking. To any human, it would be shocking. You build up your friends, you build up relationships with teachers, you build up all your academics, like, things you're passionate in, and then all of a sudden, it's taken away. How is that fair to anybody? From Benton to Central to Lafayette, how is it fair? And overall, I hear just money. That's all I hear in every single meeting, is money this, finances this, what is going to happen, how are we gonna pay for this? So why not wait? Why not wait till things are more stable? Why not wait until staff can find appropriate jobs when they feel like they're gonna be replaced? Why not take the time to talk with your community, talk with the people you know? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michelle Zeit. I'm speaking on behalf of my family. My husband is a local businessman, and I'm a state employee, but our most important role is parents. Here's our story. Eight years ago, our family of three boys had a decision to make living just east of town. We could choose our own high school. We toured Le- LeBlond, Lafayette, Benton, Central, and Savannah, and then we talked as a family. We found our home, yes, I said a home, in the St. Joseph School District here at Lafayette. We were aware of some of the issues the district had, but inside the building, we found all the things that were, we were looking for, for our boys. The outside noise was drowned out by the awesome things that were happening every day where they were. Due to the size of the school, they were able to participate in many activities, including FBLA, DECA, history club, student council, football, soccer, basketball, golf, National Honor Society, Lampian Society, and sports marketing. In a large school, I can guarantee they would not be, been afforded the opportunity to be involved in so many activities and such a big part of teams and groups. We have one left to graduate next year. One studying to become a high school teacher and coach, wanting to come back to the place that helped raise him. I can honestly tell you, we would make a different decision if we were making it today. The disappointment I and many others feel cannot be overstated. There are families in our neighborhoods making these same decisions right now for the upcoming years. When, when a business sees challenges and makes future plans, they listen to their customers, and they find ways to increase business and improve services to, to be better. We urge you to find a better way, putting our students and our families, your customers, first. There is a much better way.
Thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. My name's Jennifer Letterman, and I come to you as a parent and staff member. I too want decisions, but I don't want them made in a moment of fiscal panic. My journey with Bessie Ellison began ten years ago, and I was immediately taken aback by the camaraderie that came from students, staff, PTA, and families there. There's a sense of community there that is hard to understand unless you are a part of it. I often hear people say that Ellison is one of the rich schools, and I know they're referencing income levels, but I can attest as a heavily-involved parent of over a decade and as an Ellison staff member that we are a beautiful fusion of economic backgrounds and family dynamics. We have a variety of demographics within our walls too. We have lots of parents working more than one job, families who are doubling up, grandmas and grandpas raising their kiddos. Yes, we have families who want for nothing, but we too have kids who have lost parents to addiction, kids coming to school hungry, non-English-speaking families, kids with shoes falling apart, and we have foster kids too. falling apart, and we have foster kids, too. Rich? Yep, we're rich. We're rich in diversity, and we are a richly top-performing school. When looking at APR, we are number three. When looking at MAP testing scores, we're number one. There's something about that place, and every single person who walks through those doors will say it, because it's just far enough away from all the noise, and there's a sense of serenity there that you cannot find anywhere else in our district. Why would you take that away? It is a beautiful place to be, and that's why we're number two in the district for all school year attendance last year, and that's why we're always going to be at the top. It's because kids want to be there, too, and it would be a tragedy if you took a place like that away from our town and our school district. I've heard they are all the way out there, but my friends, there's lots of families that live way out there. And they're in the Zoo, Stonecrest, Myrna Manor, Ridge Apartments, Eagle Ridge Estates, River Ridge Estates, Housing additions east of Cook Road off Riverside, and many more out there who deserve a good education. Many of those families also supported your bond issue last spring. You close their schools, and a good chunk of those who can will either move out of this town or to a private school in our city, and your enrollment numbers are going to continue to dip. Those who stay and can't afford that, well, their support in your next bond issue is probably going to drop even further. It's a direct blow to our city, school district, and quite frankly, I think it will contribute to the snuffing out of our community. The town is growing east, and some will argue it's northeast, some will argue it's southeast, but regardless, the common denominator there is east. Why would you close a building that is your easternmost school? Especially one that is a relatively young building that was gifted to our district and has lots of acreage to grow? A younger building often means lesser utility cost. I agree, there are busing cost concerns, but when you have families living out there, it's not all that far. We're only three miles from Riverside. And when those costs are coming in for busing, we start moving them farther, it's going to cost... Oh, I'm sorry, okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Owen Zeit, and I'm a current junior here at Lafayette. I live in Avenue City and had the opportunity to choose my high school and school district. I chose Lafayette. It was the right decision. I want to talk about the opportunities for students while at Lafayette. I've been involved in so many things like football, basketball, DECA, FBLA, sports marketing, STUCO, and many more. This year, our football team has talked about the two big schools and whether we would even make the team. Many know the answer is no. This isn't just for sports, but for everything when it comes to school activities. Being on a team is a lot more than winning. Winning is great, of course, but I've been on winning teams and losing teams, and I learned a lot from both, sometimes more from losing. We learned teamwork, hard work, and dedication, and good sportsmanship, commitment to something bigger than ourselves. We have pride. This applies to sports, band, academic teams, speech and debate, and sports marketing. We have to have good attendance and grades and behavior to participate in sports. Good attendance and grades and behavior, all things that matter a lot. Our coaches and teachers push us on all those things. They keep us on track. Also, there would be less and less multiple sport athletes. People won't be able to do multiple things in their high school experience. Sports don't just offer something fun to do, but also their why, their reason why they go to school and get good grades. I've seen kids try super hard and actually care about school and their academics just to have the opportunity to play their favorite sport. If we go to the two-high school system, there would be more and more kids losing their opportunity to get involved in school and get them on the right path in their life. A two-school system takes all that away from an entire group of kids in our community. We don't believe these plans are for us students or for our coaches and teachers. It is hard this year to see everyone so worried about what the future holds for them as high schoolers and as just students in general. We believe there is a better way to make our district better. Please consider a better way. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I hope you guys make the right decision for us students.
Hi, my name is Harper Eckley, and I'm currently a freshman at Central High School. In the past, I attended both Bessie Ellison Elementary and Bodie Middle School. I'm concerned about the proposed plan for three reasons. The first concern I have is spacing in both Oak Grove Elementary and Skate Elementary. If Bessie Ellison closes, both Oak Grove and Skate would be full of kids and have very crowded classrooms. In my experience with crowded classes, it makes it very hard to focus on the work I need to be doing with many other kids being a distraction. Oak Grove and Carden Park were both recently built to fix the problems with space from their surrounding elementary schools. Closing Ellison will contradict the reason that Oak Grove and Carden Park were even built. My second concern is the students' education. Ellison had the highest state test scores in the whole district. You would think sending Ellison students to schools with lower test scores would improve the schools' test scores. That might not be the case. When I attended Ellison, I was in the Gifted and Talented Education Program. When I was sent to Bodie for 7th grade, I had the opportunity to take advanced classes. In 8th grade, the only advanced class I was able to take was Algebra I. In all my other classes, I had students in them that weren't on my level and took longer to complete the different units that each class had, and made me really bored in class. I can't say that's going to be the case for all Ellison kids, but it could be the reason for most. If the students at Ellison must move to their respective schools, they would probably be less interested in their score due to more kids in their classes and more distractions, and it would also bring the schools' test scores down even more. My final reason is how the schools are separated. With Plan 2, many of my friends would be going to Lafayette, and I would stay at Central. The same thing goes for my sister at Bodie. She would have to stay at Central with me when she's a freshman, and more than half of her friends would go to Lafayette. With Plan 7, I would have to go to Benton, and all my friends would stay at Central. The same thing would happen with my sister. No matter what plan is going to happen, me and my sister would be separated from all our friends. I know that's a concern for many families, which could cause them to move out of our district. Thank you for listening to my concerns, and I hope you can take them into consideration.
Hello, my name is Peyton Letterman, and I'm currently a freshman at Central High School. I attended Bessie Ellison Elementary and Bodie Middle School, and today I would like to share my concerns and reasonings about the current plans closing and changing the schools in our district. My first concern is the population change of our schools. Closing multiple in our district is going to make the student body populations bigger than they already are. Having a bigger classroom size can make it very hard to learn, and I know a lot of kids would agree with me. Different students learn at different paces, and when there are more kids squeezed into a classroom, that can be very overwhelming. The type of class you're in as a student really does make a difference in your learning, and more kids can mean more distractions, as if there aren't already enough of those, which brings me to my next point. Behaviors in our schools are a big problem and are completely out of hand. Coming into high school, I wasn't expecting these things to get any better, and I was right. Cramming more kids into a school just makes the issue worse, and I know one reason for that is the population of the building being larger. If behaviors are this bad at the size of schools currently, why would you want to push even more kids together and make the issue worse than it already is? My third concern is the feeder patterns you have put together. Having attended school in this district for 10 years, I've grown up with kids I went to elementary and middle school with my whole life, and most of these people are like my family. In either plan you guys have put together, most of us would be ripped away from each other. In Plan 7, I would still be attending Central with most of my friends at Benton, and Plan 2, I would be forced to go to Lafayette with some of them at Central. I know this is a concern for many. Another thing I have noticed in these plans is the closing of Bessie Ellison Elementary. With either plan going into place, Ellison would be forced to close, and from personal experience and seeing the great things that have gone on there, I know that closing that school would not be for the better. Consistently, Ellison has had the highest MAP test scores throughout the whole district. The learning experience and the educators there really can't be beat, and closing a school that raises highly-educated kids just doesn't make sense. You say that it is necessary to close these schools due to the financial situation we are currently in, but financially, we don't even know where we are because we are still finding errors. How can you sit here and present plans when you don't have a clear idea of where we actually sit now? There has been budgeting issues and miscalculations to the extent of millions of dollars, and this does not protect our education system, it just makes it worse. I don't say this on behalf of myself, but also for the kids of this district as well. Please take all my points into deep consideration, and thank you for your time.
Hello, David Duncan, 2320 Lafayette. I know a lot of people, I've talked to a lot of people, and I have seen a trend in the people that I've talked to. Families are moving out of St. Joe, and they're not just moving out of St. Joe, but they're moving their children out of the St. Joe School District because they have lost faith in it and they think that it's misguided. Whether that's true or not, I don't know. But the locals, we have declining enrollment because there's less and less confidence in the school and the public education system here in St. Joe. The instability of the district is scaring people off at an alarming rate. It is scaring families, and it is scaring quality teachers and staff away. For the life of me, I can't figure out why closing one or more of your top schools, Bessie Ellison, Pershing, and Eugene Field, is going to help anything. These are top schools in our school district here. You close down the cost of living virtual learning, you close the noise buildings, you push your administration into other buildings, you quit catering meals all the time, you quit adding more administrative positions, in fact, maybe you should cut some positions, stop spending frivolously. That would account for some of the money that you need for this expansion or whatever you're going to do. You don't pull from the core of your education experience in this district. You should always, that should always be the last resort. You want to close schools because we are in a financial crisis, yet nobody within the administration has shown us taxpayers any numbers other than some percentages thrown on a pamphlet. You keep talking about busing costs, but I've never seen the actual cost. I've not seen any actual building cost. At this point, we don't even know what numbers are accurate because we're still finding budget errors on a regular basis. Before you start carving away at our district and ultimately our community, we need an external audit. We need one now, and it needs to come from somebody other than someone here in St. Joseph, Missouri that's impartial. We are talking about budget errors, miscalculations, and delays to the tune of $30 million. There is no way, as an administration, that you can confidently say you know that this is the right plan when they've already said that you've made mistakes and in the future you're going to make mistakes. So this is a mistake, to be jumping at this overnight on this thing. I know you've thought about it, but closing these schools, that's not the answer. It's not the answer. If you vote in favor of an unstable plan, and you have called this a skeleton plan, and that's exactly what it is. Exactly what it is.
Tonight I want to tell a story about my greatest moment as a coach. It was not a district title or even a run to state. It was a simple JV game. LHS had a policy that I still practice: we don't cut players. Everyone who comes out can be part of the team. If you want to put in the work and give your best effort, there's always room. I had a young man who wanted to play baseball. He was part of our special education program here at Lafayette, and some questioned if he should play. But he worked hard and found himself in some games here and there. This meant the world to him, and he still participates in the Special Olympics today. One game, it was the last inning, and we were down a few runs, and one batter after another got on base and scored, where it was eventually bases loaded, two outs, and our young man at the plate. We were all worried, not about losing the game, but how he would handle the situation if he wasn't successful. Down to his final strike, he hit a ball up the middle for the walk-off game-winning hit. The team and who was left at Phil Welch Stadium went crazy. The next morning, during the announcements, our STUCO officer read across the intercom the results of last night's game. Not of the varsity game, but of AK's game-winning hit in the JV game. You could hear the cheers throughout the school. Now, people say this can happen any, but I do know it happens here at Lafayette a lot. Think how many students will be denied opportunities like this. Think about the opportunities being denied by students elsewhere now. Over 35 years, the district has often worked against the three-school system, but it has survived and often flourished even against those odds. Imagine how things could be if we actively supported and promoted this system: grow it, improve it, not run from it. I hear people talking about kicking the can down the road. We don't want to keep kicking the can down the road. Problem is, you don't even know what can you're kicking down the road. The can we need to stop kicking down the road is the segregated school system, where we actively participate by busing students from affluent neighborhoods so they don't have to attend schools with poor kids that are in their district. Balance the schools for students. And no, two big schools don't make it easier to make things equal, it just makes inequalities easier to hide. If you want to stop kicking the can down the road, start with planning and running our facilities with the intent of what is best for students and not special interest or groups. Maybe doing the right thing will also be the best thing. The next steps are clear, the community has spoken. We just don't want to accept the answer as a district, and we keep asking the same question over and over, expecting different results. Give the community a chance to get what it wants. And I ask this about, and I do appreciate the board, and I do appreciate the administration taking an opportunity to look at Plan E. I know there's some concerns on that, and responses to those will be posted in the next day. Thank you.
My name is Michelle Nielsen. I've been a lifelong resident of this community since 1983, and I've raised two children through the school district and now have grandchildren in the school district, and have always been an active parent and grandparent in the school district. So I do have, you know, a long time of experience with the school district. I do want to let you know that I do support the three-high school system. I have always said, and you can ask my children, I've always said that there is a correlation between the feeling of a neighborhood and the behavior of the children in that neighborhood, pardon me, whether they're in school or in home. Pardon me. I feel like that is something that has been lost in our country. The lack of Mr. and Mrs. Jones watching Johnny go to school and being a close-knit neighborhood, and I think the removal of the high schools will add to that problem. We all know what a behavioral problem we have in the classrooms today, and I think that should be an important, a very important, part of your decision-making. Also, I just want to say, when I go on the website, it's hard for me to find the information I'm looking for, and I've never heard anybody discuss the proposal of what a disposition of an asset the school owns would have in increasing the bottom line. So could I get some figures like that as to what buildings you're going to anticipate closing, the effect on the revenue generated from the sale of some of the buildings we're not needing or proposing not to need? I believe that would be very important and helpful. I also... Let's see. Oh, yes. And also, and I got some of this answered tonight, but I feel like the higher-paid positions really need to be looked at strongly. Administration, if that's what it is, or whatever the higher-paying salaries are, I feel like that's where we're going to get a lot of bang for our buck. And, you know, I don't enjoy that, saying that, but we are in dire straits, I believe what you tell us, and I believe that we are in dire straits. One other thing, I've been a Realtor in St. Joe for 25 years, so I've worked with lots of different people in the community, from tenants to homeowners, businesses, national banks, you name it, I've been there. And I know that the feeling of the community is that they have their little niches, they have their neighborhoods, they love those niches and neighborhoods, and they're important to families in our community. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name's Drew Hozleton. Thank you all for letting me speak tonight and for everybody else to speak. I'm here tonight because I deeply, deeply care about the future of this community and this school district. I know many of you up here today. I went through, you know, Coleman, Bodie, Central, and graduated in the class of 2007 from Central, and I'm still here. There's a reason why I'm still in St. Joe. I go to Kansas City all the time for work. I hear people talk trash on St. Joe all the time, and I say, cool, that's where I grew up, and that's where I'm going to stay. I'm raising my family here, they go to Bessie Ellison, my two daughters, my wife works there. I just, I'm tired of hearing that, and say, oh, your school district's a mess up there. Well, great, you know, it's our mess, we get to deal with it, so let us figure it out. But, you know, we've all heard the But, you know, we've all heard the closing school part, is part of the district's long-range plan, a way to manage costs and streamline operations. I don't doubt the intentions behind the plan, but I do question the assumption that efficiency and education mean the same thing. They don't, because schools aren't just facilities, they're communities, like everybody else has said. Every time a school closes, it creates a ripple that spreads across the entire neighborhood or community. Children are uprooted from teachers they trust, parents face longer commutes and new childcare challenges, teachers lose the close relationships that they make, make learning personal. And the community, the families, the volunteers, the local businesses who take pride in their neighborhood school, lose a piece of their identity. We always hear people talking about, especially the chamber, in order to bring businesses to St. Joe and keep them here, we have to have a good, solid backbone. It's a school district, right? Keep hearing that over and over again. We can't measure that kind of loss with a budget or a building plan, but we do feel it when attendance drops, when engagement fades, and when families start to lose faith in the districts they once loved. This plan might make financial sense on paper, but real education doesn't happen on paper, it happens in classrooms where children feel known and safe. It happens in schools where parents are involved and where the staff are part of the fabric of the community. That's the kind of foundation you can't rebuild once it's gone. When we talk about reorganization, let's remember that that word, what the word really means. It means reshaping lives. It means deciding which communities get to keep their sense of belonging and which ones don't. If we want St. Joe to grow, we need to invest in stability, not erase it. We need to strengthen what we already have, not fracture it. These schools are not obstacles, they are opportunities. Living proof that our district can still deliver excellence and community together. If we want St. Joe to grow, sorry, just did the same thing over again. So tonight I asked the board, before you vote to close any schools, that you think about what we're truly closing. A chapter of pride, of history and belonging that once lost can't simply be reopened. I've been dealing with this, with this since I was in high school. I graduated in two thousand and seven. I'm so tired of hearing the over and over again that we're short on money, we're doing this, we're closing schools, like, I just want it to be over with and I just think that the three-high school, you know, organization that we have going is the way to go about it, keeping all the schools open and just moving on and just keep, keep going, let's go. I'm tired of it. Thank you.
My name is Lucas Christman. I'm here today, I am a junior at Lafayette High School. I am in favor of keeping the three high schools open. One issue that I see with closing down one of the schools, whether it is Lafayette or Benton, is the transportation. As you have said, you have had issues with money. Over the years of being in high school, I have noticed that you have very few people actually going and driving the bus routes. You have people closing over and over, or people quitting just because they can't handle the students on the bus. How do you plan on having Benton or Lafayette closed down if you can barely have enough people to drive the bus routes with three schools? If you close one of the schools, you have an entire area you have to have buses go through and it makes kids anxious. Having a school closed down means they have to wake up earlier than what they already have to wake up at. I know me personally, I have had to wake up at six o'clock just to get ready in the morning to catch the bus. That's it.
My name's Christina Thomas and I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Bessie Ellison. I'd just like to start off by saying how extremely proud I am of two of my former students back there. You spoke well and you represented this district very well tonight. I am speaking a little bit about academics, but also from the heart. My entire household is affected by these changes. I teach in this district, my husband teaches in this district, my daughter is a sophomore at Central High School. So no matter, no matter which way we go, there's changes. When I first started working with the district in the early two thousands, it was extremely competitive and you hoped to get an interview. We were notably a highly-regarded district that people wanted to work in. Over the last decade, all of this has changed. So many mistakes have been made and more compounded on top of that. Through it all, you've had people stay. Then administration now, you stayed, you fought, you're still here. And I fear that's no longer going to be the case because the storm never seems to end. The proposed changes have dire consequences for everyone. I don't fear change, I support, I've supported every ballot issue and I want progress for our district. But is this progress or is this fear and concern for the bottom dollar? These plans outline our budget issues but neglect the students and people side of things and that's the business we're in. There must be a way to crawl out of our budget deficit without disrupting our academic foundation at the elementary level and without sacrificing our academic integrity of our district. If we don't have that, then a state takeover looms regardless and our elementary schools have become collateral damage. Instead of looking at what is working in our district and learning from it, we're slamming doors and just crossing our fingers that it'll just work somewhere else. All for the sake of the bottom dollar. The questions asked don't have clear and definitive answers, in fact, they've only led to more questions, more anxiety and more fear. Rushing to close and reorganize this many buildings so quickly will be another miscalculation that could cost our staff, students, and community dearly. In closing, I ask that everyone look at these decisions full spectrum. Ask all the questions about academics, APR, accreditation, our staff turnover, our families that will leave, equity, and our ability to offer the best education to our students. All of these questions deserve attention and if not for you, for my daughter, and my husband, and myself, and every other household whose entire lives are wrapped up in this district. Thank you.
My name's Travis Smith. I live at nineteen oh eight Blackwell Road. I am a product of the North End schools, Pershing, Rubidoo, and Lafayette. And I just, first of all, want to say I'm proud for all the kids that came out from all the schools. That takes a lot and I hope you encourage all your friends to come to the other meetings too, because it's important that everybody's heard. I also have two kids in school now. I've got a junior at Lafayette and I've got a seventh grader at Rubidoo. And the main reason that those kids are in those schools is because I went through them and I knew what kind of bonds were formed and how important the educators were, as you guys have mentioned in the beginning of tonight's meeting. After I graduated from this school, I found myself coming back here for help going through college. One educator here, an English teacher, who I didn't even have as a teacher going here, helped me. The librarians here helped me with projects for school and college. You know, that, I don't know, but that sounds like a pretty good bond and some pretty good educators to me, for them to have that time to do that. Now, twenty years earlier than that, my dad went to this school. He didn't go to college and then he became a very successful retail store manager. And that's pretty amazing. It's pretty good educators. But let me tell you about a bond that I thought was amazing. The late, great Wallace Proll, principal from this school, would stop in that store every time and ask for my dad to come up front, just so he could shake his hand, see how he was doing, and tell him how proud of him he was. Now, you go and you start merging a school to where the population is so big, you're just going to be a face in that crowd. They'll never even know that you were in that class. So I'm just asking you guys, you're hearing the voices of the community and they don't want it. Be the, be the school district board that saves the community. Don't be the ones that make a decision to ruin it. As the last gentleman said too, about the transportation, I look further into it, more than just the financing of it, but let's talk about the safety of it. You start putting kids out at bus stops earlier in the mornings, I don't know if you guys drive around a lot of the streets of St. Joe or not, but let's talk about no sidewalks, let's talk about narrow roads, and the kids are going to have to be out there earlier to get a bus. What kind of danger are they going to have standing out on a road? It, it, it just doesn't add up. It's not safe. I agree, a plan needs to be decided on quick, but I hope it's the plan to keep the three-high schools open, because that's what really we need to keep going. You guys say, putting the schools together, it can do this and it can do that, well, that also means it can fail too. But with what we got going now, we know it works. I do firsthand. I just told you two instances of it. Let's don't gamble, keep the three schools open. Thank you.
As conversations continue around the future of our district, I want to ensure that our thriving fine arts programs are not overlooked. I'm Janelle Becerra and I'm the Fine Arts Person for the St. Joe School District. With one thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven high school students enrolled in the fine arts courses, the fine arts are a vital part of our students' academic and cultural experience. The arts are not simply extracurricular, they are recognized as core academic subjects under the Federal Elementary and Secondary Education Act and by the state of Missouri. Our programs are essential, not optional. Fine art students bring energy, beauty, and music to nearly every district's celebration and event. Beyond performance, research consistently shows that quality fine arts education correlates with improved test scores. Arts educations foster, fosters critical thinking, creativity, and problem-solving, skills that enhance learning across all disciplines. I know we value data in our decision-making, so consider the following. One thousand twenty-seven high school students are enrolled in visual arts classes. One thousand two hundred and forty-three students participate in our instrumental music programs. Five hundred and sixty high school students take performance classes. Many of our fine arts programs are consistently on a growing trend. This fall alone, one hundred and seventy-one students are participating in the cast and crews at our three high schools, high school musicals. In October, students participated in twenty-seven performances and competitions, with at least twenty-one more in November. And December always brings holiday cheer across our district through our fine arts. Our district has three high school auditoriums, but unfortunately, they were not created equal. Central and Benton both have functioning fly systems, while Lafayette doesn't have one. Benton's auditorium is also a hundred and eleven more seats than Lafayette's. In my twenty years in the district, and more specifically, in my current role, I've worked very closely with the fifty-five fine arts teachers. I visit classrooms regularly, support the curriculum and assessment, attend the majority of their performances, and review student work across the district. I can confidently say, no one has a more comprehensive view of the strengths, needs, and realities of our fine arts programs. So, we cannot look, overlook the needs of our fine art students when making decisions about our facilities. We cannot squeeze students into the smallest choir and instrumental rooms with no room to grow. We can't limit performance opportunities by assigning the smallest stages with minimal seating. We can't expect equity in musical, theatrical productions, sorry, when come, when we come to schools that lack essential infrastructure. We cannot risk filling elementary schools beyond room capacity and risk the loss of dedicated music and art rooms. I urge you to keep the fine arts in consideration in your decision-making. Thousands of students are directly affected by these programs and the impact of the arts would be significant and lasting. Lastly, I invite you all to any of our many fine, fine arts events this school year. We'd love to see you there.
Kim Dergue, sixty-five, twenty-five, South Third, Benton area. Board members, I want to help you understand why the public has lost trust in the district. It's because of the constant hypocrisy. Each month you celebrate a standout school, yet at the same time, you discuss closing them. That sends a very mixed message. I watched all the ribbon-cutting ceremonies for the fields. How sad. Those kids should have had all the joy in the world for those, but no, they couldn't because they don't know if they're going to have those fields next year. I followed the district closely for seven years. Every year, you've had a new excuse of why these buildings, why a building, high school building has to be shut down. First, it was crumbling buildings. In that same plan, the buildings were so bad you couldn't keep them, the same plan moved middle school to those buildings. Well, all of a sudden, these buildings are not crumbling with different age student? The same year, your head of maintenance, Mr. Housman, won a national award for outstanding facilities. Hypocrisy. The next year, undercapacity, that's all we talked about, undercapacity, undercapacity. Yet our very newest school is Oak Grove. It has been undercapacity since the day it was built, two to three hundred, undercapacity. But that doesn't matter because that's the east side and that's the elite people and we just don't discuss it. Last year was teacher retention. What are we going to do? Teacher retention, we can't retain teachers. Well, the high school level had no problem. What had the problem was the grade schools. And the reason they had the problems, because you took our schools and you shut them down and you combined them and you made these mega schools. Carton Park, six teachers short at the beginning of the year. No one wants to work there. They, those students all were at eighty-seven percent, they dropped to a sixty-seven percent. Behavior problems went through the roof. Six teachers short. That was your teacher retention? You caused it. This year, it's finances. We can't pretend we don't know why we're twenty-two million short. If all of you would go to We the People, Three Schools Information, you will see posts of a meeting two years ago where they invited for a third raise. We've got to be careful with these raises. When you're doing, it was three-point-something, but let's just say four percent across the board, you've got people making two hundred thousand, they get an eight-thousand-dollar raise. You've got teachers making thirty thousand, they get a thousand, two hundred. Not fair. Let's do a sliding scale, that should have been checked out more. And are we talking about how we are going to travel to these schools? Our double-decker bridge, it's going down. So, we'll be detailed, detours through downtown. Can you imagine? Okay, we can't do that route, so what's our next route? Maybe Twenty-second. If you've been by Spring Garden when school starts and lets out, you've got a fifteen-minute wait, there's no way. So where's our next avenue? I-29? So we're going to have all of our buses and our brand-new young drivers driving I-29. I can tell you as a parent, I'd never let my young drivers drive the highways. That's how it was. Thanks.
I'm number thirty-three, Lori Brown. I live on South Fourteenth Street, St. Joseph, Missouri. And I don't have a script, I've been listening to everybody, I came to the last meeting. I'm not here to throw stones, make anybody mad, but I have a lot of concerns. And I am angry because I don't get the privilege like a lot of you. My grandkids now are no longer going to be in the district. My one granddaughter is in Mid Buchanan. My other one will be moving to Savannah, it looks like. So I'm not going to have the privilege. I was a third-year, my kids were fourth-year generations going through the district. What I've heard up here again to me is disgusting, sad, and very confusing. Why administration, why you have staff that feels threatened and worried about their job? Why administration went into schools? Why did you stir up things with teachers and causing teachers to leave? Decisions should have been made before teachers were even approached, or kids, or families now worrying about all this garbage. I feel like, again, this two-school solution is political. I am for three schools. I was born and raised in St. Joseph. I'm sixty-six years old. We've always had three high schools. It's a political decision in my view. You talk about money, but yeah, on a scale, we're missing twenty-two to thirty million. That should be a top priority, period. I don't even know how you can make a decision when you don't even have a budget. I don't go to the store and I don't pay my bills when I don't know what I have in my checkbook. I can't do it and neither can you. You talk about transportation. Nobody, no school, no area town can get these kids back and forth to school. And then I hear through the grapevine, St. Joe School District has entered into a contract with Uber. Who in the heck would put kids at any age in an Uber when they miss a bus or the bus can't get them? I don't know. It, it's concerning that, yes, you have staff saying, "Make a decision." No. Nobody should be feel threatened and begging an employer to make a decision. We have a decision, three schools. We don't have a budget to do anything else. Now, I'm also going to ask the boards, but the administration. You sit up here and make the decision like we're moving cattle from one field to another. We're not. We're moving precious gifts that want to learn and have a right to learn. We're not moving cattle. I ask you, how many of you, is this going to affect your family? How many of you have your kids in this district? How many of you have moved your kids after you became a member of this district to Mid... Buchanan or Savannah, where they have community support, how all school districts are by with support?
My name is James Waddinger. I say amen to that lady that just spoke. I agree with her. And I thank the board for listening to everyone tonight. And I've been watching you and you've been listening and paying attention. You haven't been fiddling with your computers or... You've been paying attention and I appreciate that. I am not a Saint Joe person. I've only lived here 30 years. One of these days, I'm going to take root on the south side. I'm for a three school solution. And I would vote for three, three schools if it was put before me as a voter, but it has not. Two schools have been put many a times, but three schools have not been put there. As a board, I think you need to make a decision. I think you've had all the facts. It's sort of been imperfect, whatever you do. Do something. Be a leader. You've heard all the numbers, you've heard what the people have to say. You're in that position, you wanted that position. You're qualified for the position. Make a decision. Lead and we will follow. But if you keep this instability up, it's just going to make matters worse. I want to say, my school is Benton, I'm proud of Benton, I'm proud of the south side. Because I know the people down there and I know the kids. And my neighbor was Luke McCoy, he was principal down there. There was a street named after Luke. He's just one example of the good administrators and the good teachers and the good staff we have here in Saint Joe. And as the lady said, we shouldn't be sorting ourselves out like cattle. These numbers are numbers. They change, but they affect all the people. So keep the people and keep our three schools if you can. Thank you for listening.
Hi, uh, thank you. And first of all, I want to do what I did last time. Thank you all. Thank you all for being here. You are the most important people in this room. And it should be us that makes the decision. So one of the kind of, the wrong, the dirty, low-down thing about this thing is we don't get a chance to vote. It comes down to four people basically, that can decide and devastate our district and our community for the next two generations. That's not right. And you know what's wrong with the two school system? Is let's start counting, one, two, three, you're out. One, two, three, you're out. One-third of our kids in this district will not have a chance to be in band, to be in the theater, to be in debate, to be in any of the sports. That, one-third of our students, that opportunity's gone. One and three, just count you off. Smaller is better, especially in high poverty areas. Nothing's wrong with 800 size high schools. There's always been two sizes of high schools in this town for 75 years. That does nothing but add character to our town throughout the state because we play at every division. And we give more of our kids and children and students opportunities. The three schools going down to two saves no money. That's a ridiculous falsehood. The three schools, we have a plan, the three schools. In five years, we're going to keep three schools, but in five years or so, let's build that new school, that new shiny thing out there on the east side of 29. But we're still going to keep three schools. There's nothing wrong with 800 size schools. Um, you know, why if we follow the boundaries that were put in place 37 years ago, 90% of our rightsizing would be solved overnight, but you haven't followed it for 37 years, no sense in trying now. Financial reasons for doing all this, because of malfeasance with money, that just feeds a false narrative. This malfeasance of this false, of the money is false to pull us off. Another thing that's been brought up several times is this vision forward. I always called it vision backwards. It was put in place, it was, it was put in place to disrupt a new board that had just been elected. Vision forward lit the fire. Do you guys remember the big mega school? They wanted a mega school? That's what came out of vision backwards, or vision forward. What we fraud of God, again here, is what Coach Book brought up last time. We have the have-nots. We have poverty discrimination in this town. When I was on the board, the biggest threats I got, it wasn't about the four-day week, it wasn't about changing the structure of the committees. It was about 60 emails a day for two months from out there on the northeast side of town saying, I would be the one leaving town if we dared made their kids go to Lafayette. The poverty discrimination exists because there's a lot of have-nots in our towns. And I'm one of them and I, I don't care about that. Poverty's not a problem with education. Poverty's good. Education is good for poverty. Thank you very much.
How are you guys? My name is Cam Corbett, 2007 Lafayette alumni and student body president. So, I've been around the block a little bit, yeah. I want to take a few minutes to talk about the impact of closing our elementary schools, especially Pershing. And when I speak about Pershing, know that I'm also speaking for Bessie Ellison, Hyde, Eugene Field, or any other elementary school projected to close, because each school is a gift to our community. I'd like to talk about smaller, smaller schools, smaller class sizes, they're financially smart investments and appealing to families. When class sizes are manageable, teacher burnout decreases, costs and turnover goes down and retention improves. Recruiting and training new teachers comes with a cost. At Pershing, we have experienced teachers who add real value to our district, a regional teacher of the year, who leads community outreach and after-school programs, a phenomenal math and science teacher who tutors and runs a math club, and a teacher who was voted as top educator in Saint Joseph. They're just a few of the staff that are part of Pershing. It's been a great school for our community and especially my family. I want to talk about the current proposal when repurposing an elementary school into an early learning center. The district must not only modify the building, but also hire and train new staff. In the last transition, when Mark Twain Elementary was converted into an ELC, the district spent nearly $600,000 to get it operational. And I know that includes salaries for staff and everything like that. But Pershing's playground would need to be redone to be a smaller, safer playground and would require fencing, soft surface as well, to fit the needs of a preschool. I understand that the district receives additional funding for each student enrolled in an ELC, but even with that revenue, it still doesn't make sense, especially with our district's concern with the shrinking student population. I think how can we justify closing a school like Pershing, Bessie Ellison, or any other of the schools to save money while also using that same school to open an early learning center? If we're going to make that level of investment into a repurposed building, my thought is instead look at a community-supported bond that could extend the life of our current schools. No closings, no changes for the next few years while we build a long-term financially responsible plan. Pershing is a vital part of our north side community. Closing it would increase busing expenses and make attendance harder for working parents. And the same goes for the other schools that are potentially closing. And finally, when families lose confidence in their schools, they leave for private schools, homeschoolings or other districts. And every student who leaves takes funding with them. We all understand that funding is limited, but students and teachers are not align items to cut. The district has a budget, but it, it doesn't need to act like that kind of a business. Schools are communities built on relationships, experience and trust. And we need not attack the board or each other. It's not north side versus south side versus midtown. We're all in it together and I think we can, uh, do this together.
I know, I appreciate everyone who was able to speak, only in all honesty, especially all of the students. It was amazing. And I just want to tell you guys, I know it took a lot of courage and thank you so much.
Okay, guys, is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Jennifer, is there a second? Thank you, Mike, would you call the roll call, please?
Ms. Miller? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Chosney? Ms. Kearns? Mr. Moore? Mr. Richel?
This meeting's adjourned, thank you.